Thank you all for coming out tonight to the beautiful oasis where we have a full wake. Yeah, Shannon just reminded me it's almost. Let's close. Anyway, I'm Dave Stow with the Texas Water Coalition. The program we're going to put on tonight, primarily Shannon talking about the, some of the details that we've been working on, is to educate everybody and share information that we've got. We're all about sharing information. We want everybody to know what's going on. We want to help everybody make intelligent decisions. We want to, to the extent we can, influence policy on the public side. And we want to ensure, ensure the reliability of water in long term. This is a legacy project for us. I'm doing it for my grandkids. I want to make sure that we've got water in the lakes long term. And that's what everybody on board is aiming for, is making sure that we have that. First, I'd like to recognize some elected officials. Lika Goodwin. And Howard, County Commissioner. Terry Cook from Orange County. Thank you all for being here. As I said, this is, this is intended to be an opportunity to share information. Certainly want to entertain your questions. We'd like everybody to go away from this a little smarter and be able to share the message. Frankly, we've got to get the message out to everybody in the area. And so with that in mind, I'm going to turn this over to Shannon Hamilton, our fabulous executive director. She'll take it all from here.
You can put your hand in me? I am. I'm trying to project. I put sheets of paper and a couple of pens on most of the tables. If y'all have questions and you want to write them down, I'm going to try and not go on the leads, but if you just write down your questions and we will go as deep as you want to go, but at first we'll get through the presentation. So, um, I actually came to my, I've been, I've known CTWC for 13, 14 years now. But the first time I moved back to Austin and was in a meeting in this room and stood up and spoke. And then about three months later, they called and said, hey, and I'm here and I'm all in and this is what I do. And I just saw our fire chief came as well. Our phone is, it makes you have water to protect us if we ever run into that issue. So thank you all so much for coming today and especially during the rain. If you came last year, you know, it rained. There was a rec on 620. It's never easy to get here, but we're so grateful that the Oasis Service Center, we appreciate y'all coming. This is something Senator Perry kept saying, this session that I absolutely appreciate it and hold. Water is life. Everything else is quality of life. You may have heard him say that and it's so true. Whether we want to survive without electricity in Texas, that's a whole nother thing, but we could if we had to. But in Texas or anywhere else, you got three days with no water and we're gone. Um, so that's a big deal. And water is still the number one issue facing central Texas, central Texas and all our region. So for those of you that don't know, and I do like to share this if it was interesting. People don't quite understand during the flow, what floodgates open? What dam is that? This is our dam system. So Lake McCannon is the mother lake. Lake McCannon is almost full. It's at 1019. One of the things, if you remember, Lake McCannon used to fluctuate six months a year. It was at 1018, six months a year was at 1020. LCRE fixed the floodgates and the dam and got FEMA approval and we will be at 1020 all the time. So they don't have to release that water anymore. And that gives us two extra feet of water year round. That's helpful in times like this. They didn't have to release it. They got to hold on because normally they would have had to have released two feet of water. Then you can see as we go through the system, Inks, LBJ, Marble Falls, those are pass-through lakes. And then you get to our beautiful Lake Travis reservoir and it is beautiful and it's at 89%. I'm sorry. It's, yeah, about 89%. So, um, and Mansville Dam and Town Miller Dam is below that. But I'd like everybody to see that, um, this is our lake system. So who we are, if you didn't know, and we appreciate you coming and chances are you probably got an email from me. But we were formed in 2012, actually in Spice Wood, a group of concerned volunteers that were involved in the first water management plan. Came together and said, you know what? We don't like how this is going and we need to get more involved. So we officially now have crossed over into our 13th anniversary. We have a 10-member board. We have myself as the executive director. We have a certified hydrologist that used to work for Texas Water Development Board. And we have a water attorney that used to work for TCEQ. So we are 100% science and data, fact, knowledge. We will never tell you anything that's not true. We were successful. We actually, something for everybody to know, and well, what has CTWC done? Well, the first water management plan, when that became an issue at that time, rice farmers were getting as much water as they wanted. They made a call for water. They got the water. And during the drought of record, the 2008, 2015 drought, we saw that depletion. So CTWC along with others filed a contested case and we were able to stop those releases. And then the next round for the new water management, that water management plan update, we were able to get more triggers put in place. If, then, when, how much water is in the lakes? How much water will they get? Now with this new water management plan, we need to raise those triggers and reduce the amount of water. But in March, they will be getting water. There's nothing we can do about it because we're operating under the 2020 plan. We are the only stakeholder representing the Hyner Lakes. There are people that are representing our aquifers, but we're the ones every single day representing the Hyner Lakes. So we're the only ones. We are in every water management plan meeting. So that's what it looked like during their last town hall. Yes, it was Hurst Creek. And that was Hurst Creek after the flood. So quite a difference. Yes, it is a big deal. And for our Marina friends, man, I know, seriously, y'all's job is not easy. You're moving, you're shaking, you're getting it, making sure everybody has access. We are representing everybody. We want to make sure everybody has, can enjoy our beautiful lakes. But at the end of the day, we want your faucets to come off. And that's what this is about. Making sure we have a sustainable future for central Texas with all this growth. So the current state of the drought, we got 20 inches of rain and we're still in a drought. Can you believe it? We are. And it's expanding already. So, um, Lake McCannon is at 20% like Travis County did this Tuesday was at 600 before. It probably still is around there. This drought began in 2019 that we're following and most LCRE returned, um, LCRE customers have returned to stage one, which means twice a week water. I would highly encourage you to stick on once a week because your grass, it's going to burn no matter what. And we just need to keep that drinking water we can keep in the lakes. Power washing, don't even talk to me. But let's keep our water in our lakes. Groundwater didn't recover. Our aquifers are still suffering. I was shocked. I watched them live and they were doing the measurements and they were watching the flow and they didn't improve. That is concerning because that is history we don't have yet. That's science we don't know. We are pumping and pumping and we don't know how long it's going to take to replenish. We've got to be more responsible. So this was before the flood. It was ugly. And here we are, 2024, at one point 2024, that was clean. Travis County and our region was out of drought because it was an El Nino year. We got three good months that we'll show you. But that's 2025. Even after 20 inches of rain, that's last week, we're still in a drought. We still have to be careful with our water. It looks beautiful. Let's keep it. So I'm going to take y'all through five of these just to go through the years, but I want to explain it real quick. I think a lot of you have probably seen it. Light blue line is the historical average of inflows. So when I say inflows, how much water is making it into our systems, our lakes, our streams, our tributaries, into the river? Light blue line is historical average. Dark blue line is drought of record, 2008, 2015. So while they look shocking, the historical average, that purple line was what we actually got. And 2022 was the worst year ever for our inflows. 2023 was the fourth worst year. So this is what's contributed to our droughts. In August of 2023, we only got in 91 acre feet. But during August of 2023, we were using, yes ma'am.
So tell us what you mean by the water flowing into the lake? The rainfall from upstream? Like what are we looking at?
So the watershed, I have a picture of the watershed, but it has to rain in the right place in the watershed. But then it also has to make it from the watershed into McCannon or into one of the streams that feeds into McCannon or Inks or Marble Falls. But we've got these veins coming in and those are reducing at a very quick rate. Yes.
Real quick, are we able to have access to this PowerPoint?
I'm happy to send it to you after. Yep. Okay. Make sure I have, I can send it to Sharon.
So is surface water making its way to the lake?
Surface water makes it to its way to the lakes. Yes. So 91 acre feet came in in August of 2023, but at that time, between usage, releases and evaporation, we were using, we were dropping 2,800 to 3,000 acre foot a day, every day in August of 2023. But we only got 91 in for the entire month. Can you imagine if that was your checkbook? That's not good. So here's 2024 and this is what an El Nino year looks like. So in 2024, we had three months, four months above average. Three months above average, then about four above drought of record. Sorry. That's why I don't drink before I talk to you. So anyway, um, but this was El Nino. This was the savior that was coming for us. It was El Nino. We're going to have a flood. It's going to, the lakes are going to fill. And they, they, the Palmer index, everybody was on the radio talking about Travis County is not a drought anymore. Well, that's not the only indicator because Lake Travis still looked really ugly. But that was 2024 and an El Nino year. Look what happened in 2025. We went right back to, we had one great month. June was pretty wet. But our concern is that if these inflows drop back to where they were, it's not sustainable. We're planning flood to flood.
Can you clarify that it's got blue and black? It's the same as we just looked at on the last three slides, but your scale has changed?
So actually I just pulled this from the LCRE presentation that they gave on Wednesday. So I wondered the same thing when I just looked at it because it doesn't match that.
So it's the same data, just a much different scale.
Yes, yes. So this is, we pulled this from LCRE. This is not, I told you, we'll always, we use the most accurate data and this is what they're showing. So nine out of the 10 years of the worst inflows have occurred since 2006. So what changed? Why all of a sudden this dramatic change since 2006? So we started a study because we needed to. LCRE did a study on evaporation. LCRE did a study on small ponds that we're going to talk about. And they did a rainfall study that hasn't been presented yet. But they did a study and I said, okay, are we going to pull all these studies together and we're going to talk about inflows and why the inflows are so low? And they said no. So we said, okay, CTWC and our hydrologists, we're going to dig into this because it's critical. This is the water we rely on every day. So the top chart you're looking at, we wanted to make sure we're talking apples to apples. So in our study, our hydrologist called Texas Water Development Board and said quad precipitation over the watershed. All that means is that's Texas Water Development Board data. There's also another data that is called PRISM that is potentially more accurate. But that's how LCRE uses and that's not what the state uses. So we're using state-recognized data. And the bottom chart is what we call the capture rate, the naturalized flows. So the capture rate is actually how much water, so you can see the rainfall. And then if you look below and see how much actually made it into our lakes, what did we capture? So if you look at the top one, you see the drought of the 50s really pumps on rainfall. But their inflows, they got a better percentage of inflows flowing into the lakes. So we know how the drought of the 50s, if you were here or if you heard the stories, drought of the 50s was the drought of record. So we looked at what happens if we have the drought of the 50s, rainfall, 2 and 1/2 million people living here. We can't survive that. We won't. So you can see again on the naturalized flows, how it changes rainfall bad in the 50s. Inflows not so bad, but look there are inflows now from 2006 and rainfall. Not so bad. County Commissioner Bridget Shea joined us. Thank you. All right. So here are the inflows. So capture rate and inflows are a little bit different, but this is the import chart. This is the new normal. This is this water management plan, what we say has to be planned for because the previous data is just no longer accurate for our region. It doesn't apply with 2 and 1/2 million people living here. So what do we know about the reduction of inflows? We know the time between floods is getting longer and longer. And the water management plan plans flood to flood because that's where we live, flood alley, right? Well, the flood now, flood events are happening. The last flood, 2018. Now here we are at 2025. We're at seven years. We're at the end of the cycle of the extreme. We don't know when the next one will be, crying. It doesn't happen anytime soon. So our study shows that with the decline in productivity and we're going to, and the small ponds that we're going to talk about, we've seen a 30 to 50% decline in the productivity or the runoff from our watershed. It's just not producing like it used to. Rainfall's changed a little. It has. But our productivity is not, it's, our watershed isn't producing the water that it used to. We know it's hotter and we know it's hotter longer. We were blessed two years in a row by cooler temperatures in June. Even in July, it started in August. Well, last year we were 100 degrees in October. I hope we're not going to be racist on October, but it's getting hotter longer. Did you have a question?
So what time period is that?
Well, it's even different than that.
50% captured in a, what, what, what's the basis?
Do you want to talk about that? Here, let me give you this.
What we saw was that...
Dave Lindsay is our VP of Technical Research. Just so y'all know, sorry.
That's, that's okay. I'm a chemical engineer, so I tend to want to know why things happen. And what we saw was just this drop off the table of normal inflows. Uh, starting, the first instant happened in like 2006. And then we had that rain bomb, uh, with Marble Falls.
2007.
And, and everything zoomed up and everybody kind of forgot about that. Well, all of a sudden 2008 happened again and it went even lower. So we started looking at what's going on that's driving this because it was statistically, I, I brought in one of the best statisticians in the entire US chemical industry and had him as a volunteer. He helped me analyze this. We looked at it three or four years and it literally was statistically different. We presented that to TCEQ back in 2013 and they laughed us out of the room. I mean, they, they're like, what? Statistics, that's not what we work with. We just kind of watched whatever. So we've been working on this, but that begged the question, what was the change? And that trend has continued. So when we talk about a percentage difference, we've started using 2008 as the reference point. Everything that's happened after 2008 and on. And everything that happened before that. And the other thing that's really unusual, unusual about what you're seeing is I doubt any of you have ever seen rainfall data presented from back in the drought of 50s. That was quite a feat to go back, for our hydrologists to go back and dig that up and be very confident that we had good data. So that's kind of, that's the thing, like the basis we're talking about. It's 2008 forward and 2007 back.
So, so you're saying since 2008, our water runoff is 30 to 50% less?
At least.
At least.
Since 2008?
That's per rain event?
That's not a very long time for...
No, so inflows...
I mean, that's only seven years. I mean, that, that...
No, no, no.
Since 2008 to here, 2025.
Since 17, okay, 17.
17 years.
Yeah, that's, all right. It's still not very long.
We don't, we don't, we could pull up, I guess, slides.
Yeah, we're having, I'm having to take you there.
I'm happy to go that call deeper because I've actually got, I could throw it up in the dark.
I just find it interesting, but I appreciate it.
The question is, is the why? The challenge, about to get into the why.
So I want to go back to this one real quick that is, that is the, so when we, 2022, we were 10% of our, our historical average of inflows. 2023, we were like 16% and last year we were 18%. So we are still at a fraction. It's not just there's a capture rate and then there's inflows and that is, are different. But inflows is what's providing the water into our lakes. And we are at now basically an average of 18% of what we used to give is what we're getting today. All right. So get back here. Okay. So there's the inflow chart, just so y'all can see it. 2025, I don't have, it's an incomplete year. So we put a placeholder there, but we didn't put it in. But obviously it'll shoot up, but nine out of the 10 were since 2008 of the worst inflows. So where we were, 44,000 small ponds, LCRE did a study, 44,000 small ponds have, have developed in our watershed.
Are there stockpiles? Is that what you mean?
So we can get into amenity or stock. Like we have no problem. Ag knows how to use water. Cattle ranchers know how to use water. We've had people come in, ooh, I want a ranch. I need a fountain. I want to be slamming. I need to... So I had a, at, up at Lake McCannon Community Alliance, they shared with me that there's big concrete developer. For $15,000, he'll dam up your stream and you have a watering hole instead of $100,000 pool you have to put in. Everybody wants, it's becoming a big, big business up there. And also 70% of our water usage is going on our lots. So as long as we're watering twice a week, we're also going to see a decline in the water in the lakes. So what do we know? We know that rapid growth is happening and we know there's a finite amount of water.
Yes, ma'am. So, but the, correct me, if the water people are getting to irrigate with is coming from the lake, right? Like it's made it to the lake and then they're using it to irrigate.
Correct.
What I'm doing, but that shouldn't be deep impacting the inflow, right?
No, that doesn't impact the inflows. It's just treated water that can be coming out of your faucet that instead is coming on your lawn.
Yes.
So it's made it through the process.
I just wanted to let me know that HOAs cannot tell you to water your grass. The legislators passed the bill.
That was our bill. We're going to get in it.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, thank you. We're going to talk about that. That was, that was a big deal. It's actually Representative Goodwin's idea, the right to brown grass is how we coined it. Now, was it her bill that passed? No, because politics got in the way. She started that bill. There's a lot, we'll talk about that too. So, um, we know rapid growth. We know finite amount of water and surface water. We have declining inflows. There's impacts in our watershed. The geographic risk, we talked to our state climatologist quite a bit and stay in touch with him. He and Dr. Mace, who spoke last year, believed that the 100th meridian, where we learned about the dry line when we were in school and everything to the west is basically desert and everything to the east is lush and beautiful. Well, the 98th meridian now, there's actually, it's over Lowe's in BK. I just learned that. That's the actual pinpoint of it. But the dry line has moved. It's sitting directly over us. And it's really interesting when you watch the storms and if you watch the radar, which I'm obsessed with and do all the time, because you watch the split. And Spice Wood calls it the Spice Wood split. But we see it. It's coming. It's heading this way and it just dissipates. It just literally goes into, and we don't get it. And it's got to rain in the right place. And it's got to rain enough in the right place because every time one of these ponds, which I'll show you, we'll stick to that. Okay, here's the 43,946 ponds since 2023, studied done by LCRE. And these are drawn pictures. This shows all of the different base was. This is our watershed. That's what... Right. There's the watershed. Yes. This is our watershed. And these are all of the things that feed into our lakes. And this is what 44,000 ponds now look like. Because a law in 2001 was passed that allowed, I'm sorry, I'm standing in front of the speaker. Allowed for wildlife and fishing on private property. And every one of those can be up to 200 acre feet. And guess what? They can have as many ponds as they want on their property regardless of the size of the parcel. You can have a five acre and you can have multiple.
Can you give some perspective on the ponds versus the impact of that versus like the 70% of the water going on the ponds? What is the, what is the, where do we, what price do they keep top of that?
It's really interesting you say that because one of our best proposals this session was let's register the ponds. So we know how much water they're holding so we can remove it out of the firm yield. And nobody would file the bill. So we don't know because they're permanent exempt and not registered. Really frustrating. We don't know the quantity. We know the number of ponds. We don't know the volume that they're holding. That's really important data. And we, LCRE went after regulation of the ponds. We did this in tandem. LCRE wanted to regulate the ponds because they know they're a problem. We decided we'll go after registration of the ponds because we at least going to have the data. It's a property rights state. We all know that. The likelihood we're going to get them regulated, no. Register? That should be easy. And even in Region K, we are very involved in Region K. Dave Lindsay is a voting member. I'm an alternate. We should be able to fund that. We recommended funding for this, but we couldn't get the bill filed. Yes, ma'am.
We really read it. So what are the different colors?
There are the different, um, sorry. So the pink is McConaughey. This is all our watershed. So it's just regions of our watersheds. So the pink is McConaughey. The blue is Colorado Bang One. This is how they define our subwatersheds that feed over the watershed. So green is three, which just works its way through the highest in McConaughey. And we can go back and show you. So this actually, this chart's really interesting because it shows you from 2015, the number 2019 to 2023 and the areas of growth and why the ponds are growing up. So that's what we're dealing with.
Is it permanent or registered? You're taking, we're, we got some interns, some of the data off of, it's not like phones, right?
So LCRE and Texas State, and I think Texas A&amp;M all worked together on the ground footage. This is real.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I can tell this part. Yeah. But I think my question was, it's hard to see. Is every little black dot?
Every little black dot is an impoundment, whether it's a dam or a pond. Yes.
So the pink one way up at the top.
So this is a huge effect on us. So where are the inflows? That's why we started digging into this. Where's the water going?
And in the bottom left, there's a little example of this.
Yes, yes, it is.
So who can regulate it?
The state legislature. So property rights, property rights. That's why we said, let's register them. Senator Flores said, my people don't like the government as it is. If I come in and say I'm going to make them register them, then they're going to say, no, no, because we know what's coming next. So it's an issue and it's becoming a rule versus...
It's really, it's real, the, the, the water, separate groundwater and surface water. Surface water is owned by the state of Texas. Groundwater is owned by the individuals that own the property. Okay? We, the surface water used to be, before 2001 with this bill, you literally had to have a functional use. You had to have a ranch. You had to have a...
Hell.
Well, livestock, you had to have ag, you had to have farming. And back, we've, we've gone back on our research and the, the ponds that were added with growth weren't really affecting the, the inflows. We, we were shocked. For, for 60 years, we went along okay, just almost drawing a straight line on that productivity. And it was when, it was in 2008 that we just fell off the table. And it was 2001 when that law was passed. And it was passed, I have a, I have a little bit more information on this. And I'm a, a state senator who's a good friend of mine told me that his predecessor had two good friends up, one on the Lano and one on the San Saba. And they came to him and said, I don't want a ranch. I don't want a farm. I just want a pond. Can't you help me? And he, that's, he's the one, he was chair of natural resources that, at that time. And he put this bill in and what they were saying was, what can a couple of ponds do? Couple of ponds can't do squat. 44,000 as of, as of 23 can do a lot of, all these ponds have to fill up before they spill. And then they evaporate. So imagine the way the system works and how we can just abruptly lose so much water.
It was interesting when I was watching all the flood coverage and one of the newscasters that was out there, she's like, this is a pond and look what's happening. And I wanted to record what she was saying because that pond had to fill up. And then whatever filled up and ran off, that went to the one below it. And then that one had to fill up and then it had to go to the one below that. And then that, and whatever made it... and whatever made it through that whole system, that's what made it to our lakes. It is a problem. It's something we've got to change. Somehow, we're not gonna be able to tell all these people, you can't have your pond anymore, but by gosh, it should be to the size of the parcel. If there's five acres, you get this much water. If you have fifty acres, you get this much water, whatever, but this is becoming a real problem. Yes.
So I'm gonna request that. Forty-four thousand ponds, twenty point three, if there's a chance, we need to understand hydrology here. Work that, that's a really good thing. But right now, that's continuing, so that thirty percent of the option, it's been a whole lot worse.
We don't know where the line is. We know we've seen, we've gone from normal historical average, eighteen percent of historical average. What happens when we are ten percent every year, because ponds are getting in the way? So we need to get that information and make sure we can register these things and understand them. Information is good. So, water management plan, this is where we need all of y'all. Water management plan, the last one that we're operating under today is twenty twenty, and that doesn't seem so bad. It opened in twenty eighteen. What happened in twenty eighteen? We had a flood, so we didn't get all the protections. We get a little bit, we didn't get as much as we wanted. Here we are, a flood again. The water management plan is open, it's, there's no defining moment that says we have to open it at a certain year. We believe we need one of those. We also believe that we need to be more responsive. If they would update the hydrology annually, it would make it easier to respond to drought-like situations. But today's water management plan will be year seven, and by the time it gets finished, sorry. And it will go through at least, they're incorporating growth, seventeen percent growth until twenty thirty-two. They may update it then, and it will have hydrology through twenty twenty-three. So the hydrology will be nine years behind when the plan ends. Our water management plan today, we're operating under hydrology through twenty sixteen. So we need to get that updated annually, because the reason they didn't open this one sooner was they said, we have so many years to add, it's gonna take more time. Well, if we update it annually, the hydrology, we can be more responsive. So we are at all the stakeholder meetings, we will be there Tuesday, actively participating and making comments. As we see, this last meeting, LCR8 showed, here's where we are. They turn all the knobs, and they figure out, how do we incorporate seventeen percent growth, and what needs to happen? What I'm about to show you is, that's not protective enough. But we are making sure that the demands meet the people that actually live here. And our, as we've talked about our study, we're running our own, that I'm about to show you, we are able to run the WAM model, the water availability model, that LCR8 can run with their numbers that they share, and see where that gets us. And that's where it gets us, exactly where we were. And I know this is, I may give the microphone back to you. So the green line that's going through this, and this, our hydrologist loves these colors, and they're hard to see to me. But the gray line is the water management plan as it was modeled in twenty twenty through what we're on. The blue line is what actually happened. The red line is what's overposing for twenty twenty-five. Doesn't look any better. And it gets us right back to where we started. So we are trying to advocate for everybody here, for everyone, that we need a more protective plan. What happens when the flood goes, when the drought goes to eight years? What does that do to the numbers? So we're trying to raise the minimum combined storage. If you hear the number six hundred thousand acre feet, that number was adopted under a different policy from TCU to LCR8 in nineteen ninety-one, when six hundred and twenty-five thousand people lived here. That number is a declaration now, it's incorporated into the water management plan in two thousand and ten, and now it's a declaration for the drought worse than the drought of record. Problem with that number is, when we hit six hundred thousand, we've got communities like Spice Wood, and Lago Vista, and Jonestown, and Valentin Beach out of water. If you were here during the drought of record, you'd know, Spice Wood Beach ran out of water. They were trucking in water, squished closed, because they couldn't turn on the faucets or flush the toilets or cook lunch. We can't let that happen again. And we've got a population over two million, so we want to raise our minimum combined storage to seven hundred and fifty thousand. And we got to see recently other comments by other stakeholder groups, and we are thankful to see that the city of Austin also said, "We need to raise the combined storage to seven hundred and fifty." And Water District Seventeen said, "You need to raise the combined storage to seven hundred and fifty." And the mayor of Lakeway came out very strongly and said, and he's an engineer, which I didn't know, and he looked at the modeling and said, and he said some bad words, actually, and we helped him rewrite his comments. Let me tell you, and he's hosting a water summit for all of our elected officials, so they can get together and decide, how do we proceed, because this model isn't protective enough. And I didn't have to tell him that. He could read it for himself. So he is taking a strong leadership approach, and we really appreciate that. We need to raise, we need to create a protective reserve. Right now, there's a contract on every drop of water in our lakes. LCR8 says, well, we have thirteen thousand acre feet. Do you wanna drink the thirteen thousand acre feet? Because that's slush, that's the silk on the bottom of the lake. I don't know, I mean, the the hope is that we never get to that point, right? But there are contracts on that. We believe there are sixteen regions, water regions in our state. We live in Region K, everybody here is in Region K. Six of those, of other regions have what's called a safe yield, they have a protected reserve. Many of them have two years of water in a reserve set aside to get them through extended periods of drought. We don't. We haven't, nothing. Literally, that needs to change. There's too many people depending on our water supply.
Is there a rationale that LCR8 has for treating Region K differently?
What Monica Masters said to me was, "Who do you want me to take it from? Because it's already been sold. There's a contract on it." So John Hoffman said, "You want me to buy new water supply and not sell it?" And my answer was, yes, I do. Georgetown is diversifying their water supply. Flugerville is diversifying their water supply. San Antonio's done a fantastic job. The only water supply we have is Lake Travis, Lake Buchanan combined storage yard. We've got to diversify, we've got to find other ways. I listened to testimony this session in McAllen, the city of McAllen, city manager was there. And he said, I was shocked, and he said, "I got an alert pop up on my screen that said, water was not purified enough, there was a contaminant. Divert to your secondary water source." And he said, "I don't have one." And my hair stood up on my neck, because neither do we. We have no other source. If anything was to happen to our lakes, or they run out, we've got to diversify, we've got to protect our water. We need to raise our triggers on our water, so we don't deplete so rapidly. March one, there's going to be a date when ag gets reviewed, and we're over one point three million acre feet combined storage between those lakes, and they're gonna get water. They're gonna get a lot of water, and our lakes are gonna drop quickly. And they're only gonna pay for the cost of transportation for that water. We've got to stop the rapid depletion.
That's, that was where I was gonna go. We, we, Region K, our region, where I sit on the, the water planning group. There's, Shannon said, sixteen regions. The state water plan rolls all up to Texas Water Development Board. Texas Water Development Board is responsible for water supply. And LCR8 has, we have been beating this low inflow drum long enough, and making the case, they would say, we got plenty of water, we go, no. And that, to their credit, we were really surprised, pleasantly surprised, that this cycle, they are breaking forward new water supply projects. Now, the cost of these things is astronomical. Well, that's why it's so important, the water we've got out there is low-cost water. This is gonna cost us a fortune, but it is happening, and that's, this is where bringing the information and science, putting in, just beating it like a drum, starts, people do start to change. And we're, we were very happy that LCR8 is putting, but these are, these projects are too far out yet. I mean, we may need it a lot quicker than they can get them built.
So we did ask that question, read that with them a couple of weeks ago, I asked about new water supply projects. They're tied up with Corps of Engineers, they're tied up with environmental agencies, and are trying. I firmly believe they are trying. It's moving them forward, and we'll talk about Senate Bill seven in a minute, and then we'll get into
Shannon, can you say what some of those new water supplies are?
They, I know, Bastrop's one of them.
Groundwater from Bastrop?
There's also some sort of small reservoir, they're in the main, hold a one and thousand acre feet. There's like six of them, but they, the board, the LCR board has asked to see them. So I don't know when they're gonna, I couldn't go Wednesday, I had a conflict, it was not in the basin report, I haven't seen it. So I just, I do know that there's something in Bastrop. We know, I could jump ahead. We know D-SAL's the future, right? That's what everybody talks about.
There is a project, there is a project that LCR8's brought forward for D-SAL all the way to the coast. I just imagine what it's gonna take to put a pipeline in and bring it all the way here.
Is the plant, is all the environmental
I know, I'm like, I don't really know what's falling up ahead. But what I've, that's not the water grid I've seen where it's coming.
That's not, this isn't a water grid. This is actually a D-SAL
I know.
type deal. The water grid's the one that we thought was gonna happen, and now we're having problems in the state with the water grid. Because if somebody does it, you're getting into my water.
You're getting in the last
So, I mean, we, all Go ahead.
It's all here. Okay, so there are other goals when we talk about seven fifty. Right now, businesses don't get curtailed until six hundred thousand. Businesses don't kick in any hell. Restaurants have to ask you if you want water. That's about it. So when you go sit down and you don't get a glass of water, it's because we're in a drought level that says, in a drought contingency plan level that says they have to ask you, so they all just pour it down the drain. But other than that, businesses don't kick in until we're at six hundred thousand, drought of record's been declared, people are out of water, then businesses get curtailed. So we think businesses need to kick in at seven fifty and maybe start with ten percent. But we all need to be in this together. We're all growing together, whether we like it or not, it is what it is. So we need to have business curtailment center, we need to use the updated science, because if we want to make sure the hydrology is being updated annually, so when that drought goes longer or is more extreme, and a faucet turns off in the sky, we can react to it more quickly. We need to plan for the new normal and the low inflows, and we need to update the cycle on a regular basis. Not every five to seven to whatever years, we need to say, every four years or every five years, this plan will be updated. And if it needs to be done sooner, because we've entered a different drought of record status, then we are available to react. Okay, well, we talked about this. So our concern is, again, the rainfall of the drought. If the rainfall happens of the drought of the fifties, if we get anywhere near that, with these two million people, that's when the bottom falls out. And that's what the bottom looks like. It's ugly, but this is a WAMR. So our WAMR shows you the, what was modeled, the blue is what was modeled. I hate the WAMR.
I know they, I wanted you to see this slide, because I want you to appreciate what you, if you wanna get involved with water in this state, you've got to get into the, the water availability model, because it's the state standard. And you, you have to have a hydrologist that's able to deal with it, log it, run it, and understand it. And then, what I do as a chemical engineer, I wanna do what else. You know, what if this changes? What you're seeing here is our first pass of taking the drought of the fifties and bringing it forward onto our TV screen today. And what that means is that we have gone back and we've looked at the rainfall of the fifties. I took a lot of work to get that data. And we're looking at the productivity of, when I say we got the rainfall, okay, one more step. We, we had to figure out, we're used to hearing inches, you know, we had this many inches today. Well, we needed to know how many acre feet of rain that fell that year. Because if you know that, then you can, and we know how much came in and inflows, you can calculate a productivity rate. And so we talk about capture rate, that's what we're talking about. So back, so we had a productivity of six, seven, eight percent back in the drought of the fifties. So when the water that came was, was getting here on sixty-eight percent, well, today, that same productivity is by two or lens. So what we're saying is, you can take the rainfall that occurred in the fifties, multiply it by today's productivity, and that's what the naturalized flows would be today. We took that, we've adjusted that, this is the first pass. We're going back right now, and we're really sharpening our pencil, because this is a big deal. We, this is, the first pass status, the current firm yield that LCR8 is selling to is about four hundred thousand acre feet of water. That's, that's the number to sell to zero. This would say, we would only have two thirty-four to sell if we had a drought of fifties. All of the information they show you is against the two thousand eight to fifteen drought, not this drought. So that's why we're saying, if we, and in the state water code, you're supposed to use precipitation and watershed condition, but the state water planning process is only using hydrology that actually occurred, not adjusted.
Is that as clear as mine?
Yeah.
Sorry. So basically, if the drought of the fifties happens, we need four hundred thousand acre feet a year to meet our demands today, but we would only have two hundred and thirty-four if we get that rainfall. So that's the big takeaway on this one. And here's where we talked about lake levels. So I really wanted to dig into intakes, because this is what concerns me so much. If you don't live at Mansville Dam, and you live further up and from home place, if you're in Spice Wood or Jonestown or Lago Vista, their intakes are much different than if you have an intake, or if you're in Water District Seventeen, you're at five fifty-five, you're in okay shape. But if you're in Spice Wood, your intake is at six fourteen. That's twelve thousand people out of water if our lake, this is elevation. Not combined storage, not acre feet, but elevation. And Lake Travis gets to six hundred and fourteen acre feet, I'm sorry, feet elevation. Twelve thousand people are out of water. Six oh five, Lago Vista, half the people are water, six hundred, they've got a second intake, they're ten thousand people out of water. Six hundred Jonestown is out of water. Lakeway's out of water at twenty-two thousand, at five ninety, and that's twenty-two thousand acre feet. So if we hit five ninety, we've got almost fifty thousand people without water.
Where do we get it?
Yeah.
What do we do next?
That's, that's, so we, it's a lot of legislation. The cost of new water that we were talking about, right now, you get water from LCR8, which you probably do, through Water District Seventeen or Lakeway Mall or the city of Austin, you're paying a hundred and sixty-five dollars an acre foot. That cost is gonna be going up in the next couple of years to two fifty. Look at the cost of D-SAL. Depending on marine D-SAL, sailing, sailing D-SAL coming from the coast, Corpus Christi is building direct from the ocean to produce the water, they're estimating twenty-three hundred dollars an acre foot. No transportation cost, just to change the water into drinkable water. If we go brackish water D-SAL, which is what we're most likely gonna be dealing with, because we don't have access to the coast, and we can't fill that pipeline. So if we have brackish water D-SAL, I've seen where that could be drilled, and the energy that that's gonna take, and they're estimating seventy-seven hundred dollars an acre foot versus a hundred and sixty-five or two hundred and fifty. You're gonna be, your grandkids are going to be balancing a mortgage and a water bill. For any, so we, this is the cheapest water we've ever had. The energy for D-SAL, the transportation cost, the environmental concerns, that was a big thing with HJR seven this, this year in this session. Because Senator Perry wanted eighty percent towards new water supply and twenty percent towards infrastructure. And the House said, "Hold on, we need to allow communities like McAllen, these are law, communities that aren't so large. What if they wanna use reuse? The water that's on the bill for, in November, that money was, reuse was gonna be excluded." They wanted shovel-ready reservoirs and D-SAL. Well, now, fifty-fifty. Fifty percent can be for new water supply, fifty percent for infrastructure, and reuse can be incorporated. But those are the things that we have to do. But those are the things that we have to do. I know it's, it's, water's going to be expensive. Texas 2036 says we need $150 billion for a new water supply and infrastructure repairs. Um, SB seven and H J R seven and Representative Goodwin, I don't, I've heard it's going to be Prop 4. Have you heard yet?
I do have a list of the props, I don't remember which.
Which one, okay. Well, I would love to know so I can tell people, be watching for this one. But we need to vote yes because it's going to be money for new water supply and for infrastructure repair. As much as 20% of our water is lost through leaky pipes because it's all been here a while and it's time to upgrade. Um, but we need to establish this fund. Last year, last session, voting cycle, we, um, they approved 1 billion. We've blown through that, that's gone in projects. So this will be 2.5 billion and then a billion every year for 20 years. So it'll start to scratch the surface. As you mentioned, the right to brown grass bill has been signed by Governor Abbott. That was a big deal, I got a lot of phone calls on that one. People saying, my HOA is fining me for brown grass, but my water provider's fining me because I'm watering more days of the week than I'm supposed to. They can't do that anymore. If we are in a drought and we are under a, a stage level that requires once a week watering or no watering, because if we hit 750 right now, there's no watering, um, then you can't get fined for brown grass. Here's the kicker, they got, and when politics got stupid this session. I was walking across the street to testify and the city of Georgetown called me and said they'd add it in a minute. What a minute, you have 30 days to get your grass green. Yes, once the drought declaration is lifted, you have 30 days to get green grass. Because that is absolutely a big deal.
It is, I'm for it.
I'm sorry?
But it's.
Having his core?
Yes.
Yes, Prop 4, please vote yes for Prop 4. I'm begging you, see the big picture, we need new water supply. So, um, now, I worked with Representative Trunkslater and Representative Paris Devilla, and we got it, all the, it's a reasonable amount of time. We got it added to 60 days. So you have 60 days and then your HOA can find it. And that's as good as we could get, but we got that passed. So right to brown grass bill got done. Um, we had.
Who can tell the HOAs that why don't we have a brown lawn contest instead of a?
Oh, I love that, an ugly lawn contest.
Yeah.
I love that. So that was this next bill, so Representative Goodwin had House Bill 1424, I think. Um, then, uh, we had three bills similar. Representative Trunkslater, um, right before the deadline filed House Bill 3995. And that was the one that got a hearing. Um, it would say drought, what it basically did, and I'm going to get into, Property Code 202.007 says, everybody can zero escape and everybody can do rainwater correction and everybody can use drought efficient water irrigation unless you live in a county over a million people. Hello Travis County. Unless you live in a city over 175,000 or unless you have a neighborhood over 4,000 acres. So they bracketed all this out and it's very confusing, so HOAs hide behind it. They think they can still tell you that all of these things exist. So we had a bill that removed subsection E and just said, everybody can do these things. We got out of committee in two days, unanimous approval, and we ran out of time and couldn't get all calendars. So when you're talking to your representatives, we need to get this done next session. Everybody should be able to zero escape. Everybody should be able to use rainwater correction. Everybody should be able to use drip system if they want to. We're a property rights state, why is that any different than those ponds? If you want to invest in your lawn, you should be able to invest in your lawn. Other bill proposals we had, Representative Goodwin filed the safe field bill that would have just allowed our districts, our regions to use a safe field bill if they wanted to, instead of blander all the red tape. We couldn't get a hearing, it was, this is what I learned, referred, not heard. Where does your water come from? What a great bill by Representative Goodwin. Let's tell people their water source so they know when they buy a house, are you on an aquifer, you're in surface water? It's all it is. Real estate associations, in a way, we don't want to talk about that. So they filed this and we didn't get a hearing and it was referred, not heard. We also have the, the registration of ponds that we didn't get a hearing. We also, uh, thought it would be a good idea to increase transparency if there were citizen advisory groups on all our rural authorities in our state. That could not, we did not get that one filed either. Rushy Creek, I love you County Commissioner Terry Cook, but Rushy Creek is going to take 79,000 acre feet of water out of Lake Travis for Fluggero, Raldrak and Lee. And the most important thing about that is it's been done. But we've got to make sure that that full capacity is included in this water management plan. Because they can be pulling it as soon as it goes live. So we need to make sure that it's. Make sure that it's what? The full capacity of that 79,000, instead of saying, well, this year they're not going to use all of it. So we're not going to put it all in the water management plan. We think it all needs to be included because they could, that pipeline could pump that water. We just need to include it in the amount of available water, the full demand.
And the water management, is that the new intake that's built?
Yeah.
That's down there.
Yeah, and it's gonna, I think it's the end of this year, early 2027. But, or I'm sorry, early 2026, it's either late 25 or early 26 that it will go online.
So L C R A recommends everyone move their straw, does that include Austin's water treatment plan number four?
I don't know, but it does, this is what, this straw is what L C R A says Spice Wood means to do and Lago Vista means to do. They just need to move it, well, they need one to move it to Mansfield Dam. It's non-deep, or it's.
I'm on 42. So I gotta get 42 miles of pot. Now, I mean, imagine that, how do you do it?
Sorry, you guys are jumping a little bit. What does it mean, everybody needs to move their straw, what does that mean?
And that's what I tried, I better take another shot at. Uh, what, this came out, besides the water management plan meetings that are on Tuesday, L C R A meets with the four stakeholder groups, we're one of them, uh, to review our comments. And in the last meeting, we were, and we brought this issue up about the lake levels and the fact that they're tied right to that 600,000 minimum. And that's our basis, we're saying we need to get some buffer in that. They said, that's, that's not our policy. Our policy is you've got, you, the, your community needs, what they, it's called chase the water.
So the straw is. So it's just an easy.
L C R A says tough beams that you live up the lake.
Yep.
And that your straw only goes down to 614. You need to build a straw that can suck water from our lake and a deeper, and so the moving is going down the table.
You have to come down to here? Yeah, because 10 or 15 miles only gains us 10 feet. I mean, you get all the way to Lakeway and you're still, you're still in danger. I mean, it, it, we, it just, I have to say, I was flabbergasted is the nicest word I would say. And, and we've heard this before, but never.
We're providing a 65 mile long lake for you to draw water from. And if it's, and if you're not drawing from the deepest part, it's done.
I'm not putting, I'm not, I'm just saying that.
It's 65 miles long and they're saying.
And it's different, the problem is, is that the lake level is dropping. And the upper levels have higher, have lower, you know, like their deal. So it's, it's a, and, and the, the thing that really, our water district, we, at, up in Spice Wood, so they come up with an idea, I'm pressing them, what are we going to do? And they said, well, we, we're going to do cofferdams. We're going to have these rubber bladders. And we're going to create a little, uh, basically a little pond to capture water because McCannon will have to be releasing the water to source Austin in this area. So the plan was, we will put, we will build like a, a U capture facility. The water will be released every two or three days, we'll catch enough for two or three days. And, and maybe we can get through it. Uh, they took that to L C R A and L C R A is telling them, no, 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 no. We're afraid those things in a flood would come down and block the, uh, the dam. So right now, we are, we are zero, we don't have any, any plan. And that's why this 600 is going up to 750 is so important.
It just starts curtailment sooner and allows us to slow the rapid depletion. And I wanted to go back on this one real quick because this session, we had 14 bills. We sat down with our, everybody in our delegation multiple times. So we had 14 bill suggestions to protect the water. And partisanship and politics got in the way. And we've got to find a way to get around that. And that means voting. You've got, we are going to host a town hall for this next cycle and invite everybody that's running. And please come ask your water questions. And we need to get them on the record that they're going to support it. Because we had five other bills that were filed, oh, no, I'm sorry, before they got filed, they had made it out of. I was, what, well, it didn't go to committee, it was when they had to, we had to submit them for the proper language.
Leg council.
Leg council. Sorry, they came out of leg council, we were told that they were being filed and the day before, yeah, we're not going to do that. We got left on the hook the day before. We've got to make sure that people are representing our water and our right to water.
Does a legislature's thing with their example from running out of water with L C R A people? It seems like they do.
I don't think they do, I really don't. They live here, but they are. And when I'm at the meetings, I will tell you, board members have come out and greeted me and had a time and said, thank you for what you're doing. Texas Water Development Board is appointed by the governor. T C Q is appointed by the governor. L C R A is appointed by the governor. What is the governor's agenda? Let's move everybody here. We don't need another chip manufacturing plant. We don't need another A I center, we can't support it.
There are 19 data centers scheduled for central Texas.
It's crazy.
Huge water thirsty.
Huge water thirst, they're not, I mean, we can't do this, we can't, and, and. Those chips require clean, pure water. It's not going to be purple pipe water, it's going to be the purest of the pure. We've got, and right now, I love our water attorney, and she said, um, this is the first time she's ever agreed in term, for term, she unders, not agreed with, that's not the right word, she understands why turnlets are important. Because every single person, Abbott's been around so long, every single T C Q, Water Development Board and L C R A have all been appointed by him now. Water Development Board has two board members, that's it. They have a chair and a vice chair. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
We're done. We've got to make smart decisions and we need people looking out for us. So what can you do, um, support us? We are, I, we are trying at the legislature, we appreciate the support that we get, we need more support. We are doing all the studies, trying to, um, the best thing that we can do to defend the protection of our waters, provide the data, show the science. And that's what our hydrologist has done. We increased his budget this year tenfold and we blew through it in May. With it, and now, we have the study and L C R A says, well, you need to go get a peer reviewed to prove it. Okay, so now we're going to go do that. We're going to go through all the steps because we believe and we know what we're doing is right. It's expensive, but it's right. And this is how we defend our water. We know we need new water supply, we know we need to raise, raise the combined storage. Follow us, um, if you got my emails, Craig, make sure you're on social media, make sure it's not going into spam. Somebody's wanting to throw promotions, but we'll send out call to action alerts. Um, conserve water, use your water wisely, remember how beautiful that is. I've seen water all through my neighborhood on all the time, just think about it. If you get a, um, I'm not sure, if you get a water, um, alert from Smart Water saying you're using more water, you probably are, and call a plumber. Um, there are things on the table, I will go get them, but if, L C R A has great rebates. So you can zero escape. City of Austin, if you're within City of Austin, they also be letting for zero, zero escaping. Look for rebates, plant native, um, I've got a beautiful butterfly garden, it takes no, no water. Um, follow the drought restrictions, know what they are. Crazy enough, they're not the same. So somebody's stage one, maybe twice a week, everybody says twice a week, but stage, once you get to stage two, some people can wash their cars, some people can't, some people can refill the pool, some people can't. Because it's up to the water provider, what drought restrictions, how they choose to reduce the water usage. So make sure you're looking so you don't get fined. Um, because it's crazy, I had a, my hairdressers. So me and her son, I was running brave, was starting a power washing business. I was like, no, 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 and I looked it up, where she, she was in Dropping Springs and power washing was going to be a huge fine, so he's out there thinking, I'm making money for spring morning, he's going to get a $250 fine. So just know your restrictions.
Put into perspective the 6,000, 600,000 acre feet combined storage versus 750,000. What's that percentage of capacity?
So we, our lakes combined hold 2 million acre feet. So if we're full, 2 million. We haven't been at 750 in a long, a long time. Or actually, we were, we came back up to 900 after 2024, but, um, it's, it's a percentage of.
Maybe if, too merry, it's, it's not that big enough.
It's, it's. Everybody looks at the lake level, the percentages, they don't get their acre feet. So what's the percentage if we're all part of 60%?
So 150,000 acre feet is how many feet, and it depends on, see, that's the crazy thing too. When they say 600,000 acre feet combined storage, we want to put that in lake level. What does that mean with elevation? They won't do that. I cannot, we do not have those numbers because it, it depends on how much are they going to hold in McCannon? Are they going to drain McCannon? Or are they going to drain Travis? L B J has to have certain amount of water just to make sure that they can produce power. So it's hard to say on acre feet versus elevation. A percentage would, would raise us 10 feet.
There's one crazy factor that I don't quite understand how it's going to come together. And that's that the contract sales that L C R A sells to, they're selling the lakes to zero. But for long term, firm yield, that's what firm yield means. It means you're going to sell every drop you've got. What a safe yield means is you're going to build a buffer. Okay, right now, we don't have a buffer, we have zero, nothing. First time we said this at the legislature, they thought we were crazy. What do you mean you have, you're selling zero? That's what it is. Uh, the other, the dilemma to me, well, dilemma's one way to call it, is that we're sitting here talking about a buffer in water management plan that's currently 600,000. And what we want to do is raise it to 750 to have enough protection. How do you reconcile that the water management plan is, is at least 600, but the sellers are at the zero? Is the, if this growth comes together and then, if these, if these chip, the, the, the power centers and everything like that, we can shut back water on our grass. How do you shut back the water to these guys? And if they all come in and that firm demand rises, we, we're going to have a, what they always thought, I think, is that by the time we got to those full contracts, it, you know, it's been way past our time. The problem that's happening to us is the speed of change is too fast. And these, there, there's nothing reconciling these two issues right now.
So the big thing, you see this rapid, this, all looks the same. That's, that's when, right here, that's the flood, 2018, and here we go. We've got to slow that down. So we think increasing it to 750, which would raise everything. It would raise the levels of drought contingency plans, it would raise the triggers for releases. If we, that would slow that decline. That would make it easier on our marine friends, that would make it easier on all of us to make sure our lawsuits come out. It'd make it easier for businesses to plan. We need to slow that curve. And we think that raising it to 750 and bringing those D C Ps up, we need to do that sooner. Yes, ma'am.
How do we get L C R A to do that when I think five or six counties in central Texas went, and your coordination went to L C R A and urged them to serve their, um, water management plan sooner?
And self-reliance.
They said, everything's fine, nothing to see here, no problem. So how do we get them to take this seriously?
So what you can do, is, um, this is the time, the water management plan is open. And Commissioner Ann Howard and Commissioner Richard Shane, Terry Cook and, uh, Burnett, two of the Burnett County Commissioners, and we have Alano come. So there were six of us that day, or y'all, six of y'all. And we're not ready, we're not ready to open the plan. The plan is open, use your voice. I would be happy to give you the email address so you can say, here are our concerns. Reach out to your water providers and tell them your concerns. Because Water District 17 is at that table with us. Lakeway Mudd, they're in, in the room with us. Tell them you're worried and that we've got to do more. Tell your mayors, and Mayor Kilgore's coming with us on Tuesday. He will be at the water management plan on Tuesday because he represents 22,000 people that could be without water. I know it doesn't feel like it's effective when we say right, right? But right now, you're. I know it doesn't feel like it's effective when we say right, right, but right now, your voice is the most powerful thing we have. We all have to come together and say, no.
So is the commentary open for the water management plan?
Yes, it is.
And have you sent out links?
Well, they're in the process once it goes to the board in January, but the problem is, the way, the way we keep looking at it is, the cake is not quite in the oven yet. So this is a good time to give feedback where you can create change because once that cake is baked and it's got ten minutes left, we're done. So start writing your comments.
We'll bring a resolution to the Travis County officials.
Please, and I would love to come and talk to y'all and go through this, our concerns, and we need to do the same thing in Burnett again, that's next on the list, but we really need you to use your voice, support our work. If you wanna get involved, please do so, and you have any questions? But we, we've kept it pretty open. Yes, ma'am?
For that seven fifty number, y'all, how many white papers that we can look at and like give to our people so we can get people to understand like what, why it's only seven fifty, or like why it's only six hundred and what we need at the seven fifty?
I don't have a white paper on it. I have the, I have the document that shows where six hundred came in in nineteen ninety-one.
That's the vast data right there.
Okay.
That was set in ninety-one.
Six hundred and twenty-five thousand.
We're four X that now.
Do you have the testimony of any of the other jurisdictions that have requested seven fifty, and did they provide a rationale in their comments?
City of Austin requested seven fifty and Water District Seventeen, but not municipalities. But I can send you going.
Any comments like that with the rationale that y'all couple to share?
Yes, I'm happy to. And, and you can find it, there's a link for LCRAs in all, uh, the presentations that they're presenting that is really helpful, and I do believe they're trying to make it more protected this time, but there's so many demands. And they need us also to say, they need us to say, stop releasing so much water to rice farmers. Stop, we need to, environmental flows are important, but they need to be in conjunction with how much water we made it in before we give everything that came in and then we release it all. So, yes, ma'am?
So back to restrictions, and you said that the individual water company, wherever county you're in, they're the ones that set up what restrictions go for this, like you can't give the water for so many days and what we can't. So how do you change the restrictions? Because there's so many restrictions that should be added and changed at each district. How would, how do you?
There's a board meeting. So you could go to Water District Seventeen's board meeting and you can make comments to them. So LCRAs sets the standard, like stage one is, is one point three million acre feet. That washed everything clean. But, but the way LCRAs does it is, they say you have to reduce by twenty percent. You go figure out how you do it. So that's where your comments can, can help, and they could go more. The funny thing, so then when we hit a new stage, they've gotta find another twenty percent to give up. So there almost needs to be a hierarchy list, but I have a wonderful, well, we're hosting our golf tournament. Yes, we have a golf tournament, but we are doing, we do it at a golf course that is on their transitioning to reuse. And she went ahead and reduced to make, she, they own the community, they made everybody reduce by forty percent. I said, Lori, hold on, you're gonna have to find another twenty. If you start with forty and we go to stage three, you gotta find another twenty. And she said, no, I don't. Yes, you do. And so she then went back to LCRAs and said, I'll do forty, but I wanted my contract that I'd hit forty already because I believe in conserving it now. So she made a residence buy-in. Lakeway Mudd has a board meeting, Water District Seventeen has a board meeting, and you can help. March, new DCPs. My understanding is, LCRAs is working on new DCPs right now. March one, we'll hear more about them at the board meeting. That will be the time to kick in and I will send it out and say, hey, it's gone out to your water providers. The water providers are gonna pick how they choose to follow it. I wish everybody was the same because if you can't find it, when I went to find it for the kid in dripping springs and I don't know how to use the internet, oh my gosh, it was buried five clicks deep and I didn't know what I was looking for. Needs to be front and center, and if everybody was the same, it'd be so much easier. San Antonio does a fantastic job of communicating all that. Here's our water level, here's our aquifer level, here's what we're on, everybody's on the same restrictions, everybody knows what it is. We don't. You have to dig and find it, but make sure your voice is heard on that.
So District Seventeen, their board is different than in my, I've signed up with the City of Austin water. I talk to them all the time, I bring in the water forward, board meetings, but this District Seventeen is different than that?
Yes, it depends on where your water comes from. Okay, so again, we are a nonprofit, so there are QR codes on your table. You can sign up for our newsletter if you didn't get it before you came. You can sign up for the golf tournament, you can make a donation. Get involved. You can sign up to volunteer. We have, our golf tournament is October twenty-seventh, and there's wine tastings if you don't play golf like me. So I'm going to wine tasting. Come drink wine with me at twelve o'clock, have a beautiful lunch and shopping. We're gonna have David Yurman and Kendra Scott are coming, plus a lot of local boutiques. It's a lot of fun. We had a great time last year, White Auction, Rapples. We would love to see you there. Are there any more questions y'all have? Like, yes?
We just, I swore it wasn't the same.
Please do. We're ready.
One observation, I'm glad to hear that now people can potentially need rain water rate, that type of thing, water storage, rain water storage, because that's been a dilemma of our ages along with, you know, our wonderful grass and sucks up water. But it's sort of like, my, we have lived in Georgetown for quite a few years and quite new, they act to the plate. You made the comment about how Georgetown's diversifying their sources. That's only because, learn my language, they have no shit on it. Two years ago, if I recall correctly.
They did.
Josh Schrader suddenly discovered, and I love a man I've known for thirty years, we do not have capacity to twenty fifty, we only have capacity to something like twenty thirty. That's the only reason they've been diversifying. Yet I get an email today from Josh, big news, we're doing a new mainstream development project. Bring it in, more, you know, people are gonna be using the water. So my point is, every community around is addicted to development. And the more they develop, the more demand on our sources. I don't care about runoff, like, again, I don't mean I don't care about it, but that's whistling in the wind compared to the, the choice. Like, you have ground, ground tax base for the near term versus control the ground and control list of laws. From the laws, and no one's really honestly looking at it.
So.
I don't.
I can say that.
That's my answer.
So it's interesting. Two board meetings ago at LCRAs, one of the, they, when they presented the beginning of the plan, we're gonna incorporate seventeen percent growth, we're gonna raise the triggers. And some of the board members who are rice farmers, jaws hit the floor and said, no, no, we need to lower the triggers. And they said, no, we have to raise the triggers. They're trying to be responsible on that stuff. And then one of those rice farmers said, wasn't it Lake Home County that said no to nine new developments?
Yes.
I can't even tell you. I know, that's what he said. I was sitting there with popcorn, like, oh, this is gonna get good, here's somebody actually asking the question, and crickets.
But there's another issue.
That is the, I mean.
I represent a number of developers, not business owners, not a person. And I had a very interesting conversation with the superintendent for a very many developers. He was doing a massive development west here, and he was laughing. He goes, we're all ashamed of what we're doing. But you're all talking about water restrictions on sprinkling? You're talking about no power washing? He goes, we empty water towers in the course of a week and they refill and we're not paying a fraction of what homeowners are paying for water. Because they get the developer deal to come in and do it. So he's like, we don't even care, we drain it so fast.
We need.
And then, and we time when we're gonna drain it and what recovery for that water tower is going to be. And he said, and no one seems to even care, they don't even know. It's all about, we're paying money to develop a tax base and the politicians in place, no offense, that's all they care about. He goes, now we're doing forty foot front lawn on our yards. Forty feet, we can air magic. He goes, so now we do four houses, we have two free lots, hundred percent profit on those two excess lots because of the narrow lot lines. And he goes, and everyone's just sitting there, they're totally messy. And we're gonna run, I'm getting retired, I'm out.
No, it's, I mean, it is a problem. It's a real problem, we know, and we know we're not gonna conserve our way out of this one. Drought contingency plants are not new water supply. We need new water supply.